I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, August 21st, 2025 to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Absolutely. Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritado?
Here.
Trustee Matrasco?
Here.
Trustee Beakine?
Here.
Madam President Giannelli?
Here. Tonight, the Glendale Heights Crossing Guards will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Crossing Guards? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to extend a warm welcome and thank you to our Glendale Heights Crossing Guards for joining us tonight, as we've been focusing a lot recently on safety and security and a really robust plan to make sure that our streets and our sidewalks are safe and a place where our children and families can get to schools and get through their neighborhoods in a way that's what they deserve. And we've heard for years from the Crossing Guards about the challenges they see every day at those intersections, the challenges they see buses trying to get through. So inviting them to come today was important because the work that they do on behalf of our children, our community, is something that we can't do without. So thank you very much. We now move on to petitions and communications.
Mayor, did you want our safe driving video?
Oh, thank you.
Schools in session, Glendale Heights.
That means kids are walking, biking, and waiting for buses. Esto significa que los niños están caminando, corriendo bicicleta, o esperando los autobuses.
Slow down. It's not worth a life.
Look twice before you turn.
Stop for school buses. No exceptions.
Obey the speed limit. Always.
Drive like your child is on every corner.
Our kids are worth the extra seconds.
Listen to Crossing Guards. They're keeping us safe.
Háganle caso a la gente que cruza los niños. Los están manteniendo seguros.
Be the reason Glendale Heights has safe streets.
Together, we can make our community safer for our children.
I take the pledge.
I take the pledge.
I take the pledge.
I take the pledge to safe driving.
I take the pledge for safe driving in Glendale Heights.
I take the pledge to safe driving in Glendale Heights.
I take the pledge to safe driving in Glendale Heights.
I take the pledge to safe driving in Glendale Heights.
Me comprometo de conducir de manera segura in Glendale Heights.
I take the pledge to safe driving in Glendale Heights.
I take the pledge to safe driving in Glendale Heights.
I take the pledge to safe driving in Glendale Heights.
Thank you, David, for helping us put that together, to you and your team, and to all of the members of our community who participated in that, our principals at our two school districts here in town. Again, just a way that we could get the message out that this is something that we're all working on together. And David, I believe there was one more video that we were going to share.
Yeah, so Glenbard North High School, actually, one of their groups. It's called the Glenbard North Influencers, a group of students who, this is what they do. They focus on social media, social media influencers. And they picked up our campaign for this. And Chief will talk about a little bit more in his board announcement. But they put together a short video, which will be premiering this Saturday. So I wanted to show that tonight, kind of a sneak preview.
Thank you.
In our community, safety starts with us. Tua is on the road. That means cut the phone away.
No texting, no scrolling.
Come to complete stops.
Use your signals.
Slow down in neighborhoods. Share the road.
With bikers and pedestrians.
One second of distraction can change everything.
The Teal Dot pledge means driving with care.
Promise to drive safe for all of us.
That's really good. Yeah, that's wonderful. And again, like, that testament to what a community is, is the districts, is the high schools, the elementary districts. That's really meaningful if they did that. So thank you. All right, I think now we move on to petitions and communications. Trustee Beakine?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. And for those watching at home, I'm going to make this very simple and short. For my board report, I attended an open mosque with several of us, with the mayor and trustee Siddiqui. I attended a unity peace walk. I also had a hot dog day for the golf course with the seniors also that day. And we did a tour, again, with the golf course. As far as with that, I did a board workshop with everyone, which was really great. I learned a lot. The other one is, I did drive all around the district after the storm. So please, if you do see anything, branches, anything that's on the road, you've got to let us know. Give us a call. I want to thank Public Works for that, because there was something there that we did see, huge branch, that they did take care of. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Trustee Matrasco?
Thank you, and good evening. So for me, I actually ended up going to a couple of our meetings to understand how some things are taking place in our committee. So I got to go to the Founder's Day, which, for anybody who doesn't know, that's all about our fest. And there's a group of people who made that fest actually happen. And just to hear about some of the things they did, pretty amazing. So it's good to hear where they're at, what they're trying to get ready for next year, or they're already talking about next year. Yes, I know, 365 days away, already starting. But able to listen in on the planning committee as well, to hear about things that are going on there, things that I haven't been part of. And it's pretty amazing to see people that are in the community just coming together and making these committees happen. I also was able to attend our workshop. One of the things that actually was amazing about this workshop is how we all were able to come together and start to grow as a group and start forming an alliance and a team so that we can bring things to our village and make things better as we go along, and also work collaboratively, and also learn. I learned a lot while I was there. So it's actually pretty amazing in how many different things we do. The other thing is, is I do want to push, I did do the Teal Dot. I did do it. I do encourage you all to. And if you haven't done it, go home and do it. I'm not going to tell you all to get on your phones right now and do it, but definitely take the pledge. It's well worth it.
Thank you, trustee. Deputy Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have no report.
Thank you, sir.
You gave a tour.
No report.
Clerk Darlene?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the unity walk as well. I do a lot of things with our seniors, our bingo, our trivia. David has a picture for us today for our trivia. This is our team that won, that they haven't won in three years. And I know that you guys don't understand trivia, because you guys aren't as old as I am yet. But someday, you're going to be there at our civic center playing trivia. And they had not won in three years. They were so excited.
That's wonderful.
The whole place, yes, the whole place was just in roars there. So that happened today. I attended the hot dog day. I have been working with Janie Legoya, or Legoya.
LaToya.
LaToya. Just another godson of our employees, trying to teach me what we need to do here in the village. I attended the tour of the golf course that Pat did not take us on. I did continuing education for clerks through a website that I had found. I took care of three resident calls, just from my subdivision there, and we knocked all of those out. Someday, I'm attending Pakistani Day over in DuPage County. That's Sunday evening. I attended the board workshop, and I as well took the pledge. And what I'd like to say is, last time I forgot to, it was my honor, honestly, to be able to swear in Shay Afarazi as our new police officer. And I forgot that last time.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the special board workshop, attended a meeting of the golf committee, and the ASME negotiation session.
Thank you. Trustee Siddiqui?
Thank you, President Giannelli. I don't want to bore with my fellow trustees already covered, so that's my report. I do have a question. On Saturday, when we have our special board meeting, do we have minutes for those meetings?
They're already posted, yeah.
They're already posted? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Light?
Oh, for me, basically, ditto with Pat, no real report. I did do the workshop, but no real report. Thank you.
Thank you. Community, for me tonight, there's a couple of events that I really want to focus on. Like my fellow board members have described, we had a lot of busy work to do in the last couple of weeks, lots of contact with residents, and calls with the individual board members, meetings with our administrators. But there's two things I'd like to focus on. The first being that Saturday workshop. I think that the feedback that I've gotten from the board members individually and collectively was that this was time well spent. We spent four hours together, really getting into the details and the minutia of things that we just don't get a chance to work through, like the importance of evaluating committees. If they're still serving their purpose and useful, do they need to be modified? And what are recommendations that we've heard from board members and from community members about new committees that we all like to see? Some of those suggestions include capital improvement and budget oversight committee, a technology committee, and a special events committee. So more details to come on that, but all of the conversations were robust and meaningful. We got into things like board confidentiality, some governance. And it ended, and I'm saying this publicly while they're all here, with everyone agreeing to do it again. So my commitment to them was to pull together a few Saturdays for them to choose from, look at their calendars, so that we can come back together and finish the work that we started. The other event that I'd like to just touch on is that unity walk. Several of us on the board did attend. This was in partnership with IEC, the Islamic Education Center here in Glendale Heights. And again, this is an event that they've historically held year after year. It was my opportunity, and really our opportunity as a community, to come together and stand in solidarity with them and just really demonstrate to everyone who is wondering what Glendale Heights is about and who we are, that unity walk is a testament, but it's also day one. You can expect more updates coming from us as a board in terms of how we plan to walk together, this path of bringing our community together, of healing, and really talking about our identity. So more details to come on future events that we're excited to share. Thank you. Okay, community announcements. Mr. Flint?
Thank you, Mayor. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, September 6th, the London Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime, (630) 909-5302, or contact your local district trustee. The village of Glendale Heights is looking for qualified individuals to get involved by applying for village committees or commissions. Current openings include property enhancement, ordinance committee, emergency management coordinator for the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Police Pension Board. These vital positions will shape the future of the village. To submit an interest form, applications are available with myself or the village president Giannelli, or you can download the form at the village website, www.glandalehighes.org. We have received many. We are working through them. We will hope to have appointments to boards coming up in the next two or three board meetings. But everybody knows we're working through them. We have a lot of applicants and trying to put the right people on the right boards.
I do have one question I want to clarify. So since we are forming three more committees, are we going to publish that? Because I'm seeing the old committees in the home.
Well, yes, we're not quite at the new committees yet. So once we get there, we will certainly use the applications that we currently have, right, and reach out to them and see if they want to be part of a new committee, right, and then seek applications for the new committees as well.
Okay, so do we have a deadline for that one?
I think what we, yeah, I think what we discussed was by the end of the year that we would have all three, because we have to form them, we have to approve that kind of, that structure and that shape of each of these. We have to approve how many people, what the size and scope are. Once we do that month by month, we're going to start, I think, with, which is the most priority. But by end of year, we'll have them all shaped and have applications in so that we can make those appointments.
No, I'm talking about applying, like, you know, for the resident to apply for those committees.
Sure. I want to be able to tell them, though, what the description of that committee is. I want to be able to say, you know, this is technology and this sort of skills and experience and expertise that we're looking for and invite that in. So I think I'm open to, I mean, if you want to apply today, please do. But ultimately, we need a little bit of time just to frame that out.
We also have to work with the board to frame out how many people will be on these committees, and which people will be on the committees, right? We haven't gotten that far yet. So once we get all that figured out, then we can figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vales?
Yes. The village of Glendale Heights has many years of history dating back to our founding date of July 13th, 1959. The village invites everyone to attend our open house at the Glendale Heights Historic House on Saturday, August 30th, from 10:00 a.m. until noon, in conjunction with the Glenside Public Library. The historic house is located at 311 Windy Point Drive at Heritage Park. For more information, please contact trustee Michael Light at (630) 909-5308, or Jessica at (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, sir. Chief Pappas?
All right. The village of Glendale Heights, the Glendale Heights Police Department, and our local school districts are teaming up to encourage everyone to take the Teal Dot pledge for safe driving. School is now back in session for all of our Glendale Heights schools, or it will be prequinted. And we are encouraging the drivers to put down the phone, keep their eyes on the road, slow down, and drive like your child lives here. Teal Dot stickers are available at all Village Hall facilities. Our Crossing Guards will have them as well, and your elected officials by this evening. We encourage you to take and place these vinyl stickers on your back window of your vehicle, on the front window of your home, or place a business to remind everyone to drive safely. As a reminder, and remember, these are our roads, not race tracks. For more information, please contact www.glandalehighes.org/tealdot. And Citizen Police Academy. The Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their annual Citizen Police Academy. The Citizen Police Academy will be held on Wednesdays from September 3rd through November 12th, and features a realistic view of our police work taught by our Glendale Heights officers. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years or older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Application and enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the village website. For more information, contact the police department non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. Charity Golf Classic. The village of Glendale Heights invites you to the annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Wednesday, August 27th, for a 9:00 a.m. shotgun start at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will also feature a brand-new golf clinic, starting at 1:00 p.m. for those wanting to learn a little bit about golf and to join the Charity Golf Classic fun. For just 100 hours, you will receive golf instruction from a PGA professional, as well as enjoy the cocktail hour and dinner. If you would like more information, wish to become a whole sponsor, or to make a raffle prize donation, please call Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-0018. Help us make the annual Charity Golf Classic another great success. The Show and Shine Car Show. The village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the annual Show and Shine Car Show and Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 18 classes of vehicles on display, along with a swap meet, food, music, and more. If you are interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighes.org/carshow to download a registration form. For more information, please contact trustee Michael Light at (630) 909-5308, or Jessica at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to Mr. McCumber, I just want to put a request out. If anyone is like me and has never golfed before, but wants to participate in the golf outing, I'm looking for a friend to do the clinic with me. Diane, and Sharon, and Edith, and Tanya, if you know anybody who would like to join me at the clinic, I would love for you to reach out. Looking for friends. Thanks. Sherri, you too. Mayor, you too. I need your help. Okay, thanks. Sorry. Mr. McCumber?
Thank you, Mayor. The village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Thursday, September 11th, with a silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 p.m. on the front steps of Village Hall. Please join the village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights community as we come together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot's Day. Never forget those we lost on September 11th, 2001. For more information, please call Jessica at (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, Joc. Peter?
The Glendale Heights Police Department is now hiring for new police officers. Applications are due by Thursday, September 11th. Join a team of hard-working individuals who have dedicated their careers protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights, while staying true to community-oriented policing. For applications or for more information, please visit www.joinghpd.org, or contact the Glendale Heights Police Department non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. The village is also still looking for Crossing Guards for the 2025-2026 school year. If you want to join our awesome people here who did the pledge today and help ensure that the safety of our schoolchildren in the morning and afternoon as they go to school, apply today to make a difference. Pay starts at $17 per hour. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighes.org/hr, or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357.
Thank you, Peter. Darcy?
Thank you, Mayor. GH2O Aquatic Center's last day of the season is Monday, September 1st. Postseason pool hours begin August 9th, which means the pool is only open on Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 5:00 p.m. Stop by and cool off in the pool and soak up the last few days of summer sun. For more information on GH2O and the postseason hours, contact the sports hub at (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, Ms. Darcy. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Join us at Veterans Memorial Park every Thursday for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 2:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. If you'd like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459.
Thank you. Thank you. We're moving on to item three, a proclamation to proclaim August 31st, 2025 as International Overdose Awareness Day. If there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation.
I go for it.
You should.
Thank you. Next, Springfield updates by State Representative Diane Blair Sherlock.
Good evening, and thank you so much for giving me some time. I know you guys have a really full agenda, so I'll try and be as brief as I can. But I'd like to start by saying, thank you, Glendale Heights, for being such a wonderful community. It's been my honor to represent Glendale Heights in the Illinois House since December of 2022. And I have found the people in this community to be so warm and caring and loving, and have embraced me, and I appreciate that. And I feel very connected to Glendale Heights. I wish that we had been able to address some things in Springfield this year, but they're hard issues. It's not an easy job, and we have a lot of competing factors. And there are a lot of budgetary concerns this year that we did not have in the past. Some of you may have received or heard some things about public transit, and that the CTA needs to be bailed out and things like that. Well, let me be very clear. I am on the Public Transit Working Group. I am the only member of DuPage County, all inclusive of DuPage County, on that Public Transit Working Group. And we do not agree with the Senate bill that passed. We are not agreeing to the terms of that bill. We have been working diligently every summer, or over the summer, and I'm really sorry, because I want to do the police academy, but our meetings are on Wednesdays, so I can't. But we meet every week, and we are working on it. It's not a simple fix, but it's not just the CTA, okay? People need to understand that the fiscal cliff faces all public transit. That includes PACE and Metra. Now, I know this isn't a train town, but you may still have people that take the Metra to work, right? They drive to a train town and they take the Metra to work. But PACE also covers parent transit, senior transit. I had a town hall at Carroll Stream, because I figured it was close for everybody. It was kind of in the middle of the county. And I had several young men come using parent transit to tell me this is the only way they can work. So this isn't just a Chicago problem. This is a problem out here, too. But be rest assured, we hear people. We're listening. But please don't just buy into the first thing you see on the internet or the propaganda that's being spread out there. There is not a bill right now that the House would agree to or approve. So we are working diligently on it. We hope to resolve it when we go back to Springfield in October. And I really think that that can be done. There's also been some additional media and press about the shortfalls in Chicago public schools. This is not something that they have discussed with us as legislators. They do a lot of press conferences. But this is not a serious discussion. Serious discussions would involve legislators. So please be rest assured that we're not going to suddenly go down to Springfield and tax people a billion dollars to make up their shortfall. That is not going to happen. So I just want to set those things straight and make that clear. I serve on K-12 policy and curriculum and higher education. And I do that because I think education is the great equalizer, okay? And I think education is very important. It's how I got out of poverty and was able to give my children things I never could have dreamed of. I also serve on energy and environment, because I think we can all agree that our environment is very important. I am the chairperson of state government administration, which involves contracting and terms that are used in contracting. It's kind of broader than that, but with the government. And so that involves the treasurer's office, a lot of times the comptroller's office. I love chairing that because I'm a contract attorney, and I'm a total wonk. So while most would go, oh, this is really boring, I love it, and I dig into it. So most of my bills aren't super exotic, but they matter. You know, cleaning up old legislation that needs to be cleaned up. One of the bills, I know you're going to like this one. We passed a bill this session that created a task force to look at all the mandates on the schools, right? Because there are so many of them, and we want to narrow that down. So that's some of the things that I've been working on. Like I said, the Public Transit Working Group, it's a lot. But we are working really hard on it. We do think there's an answer, or answers, but it is just a super big issue. I'd also like to talk about some things I have coming up. And you can check my website. It's like replairsherlock.com or something like that, but you can Google it, and it comes up, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't know it. But on August 26th, I'm going to be doing remote office hours at the Glenside Library. You know, my office is in Villa Park, and apologies for that, but, you know, it was the old office, and I kept it. Why move? And so I figured this was a nice way for people to be able to meet with me closer to home. So I will be at the Villa, excuse me, at the Glenside Public Library on August 26th from 11:00 to 1:00. You could always call my office. And truth be told, I am in Glendale Heights quite frequently. So, you know, flag me down. People flag me down all the time on the street. So, okay. The other thing, the things that I have going on is September 18th, in conjunction with School District 88, whose main office is in Addison, Illinois. We are putting our presentation in conjunction with the Department of Insurance. And it's geared towards young people, right? To learn about health insurance, key terminology and things like that. My children are adults now, but I remember when they turned 18 and the doctors wouldn't talk to me anymore. And they had to deal with their own things, but they didn't, weren't equipped to do that. So we're trying to create this educational forum for young people to learn about health insurance. Adults are welcome, too, if they want to learn about it. But this is really geared towards getting children ready for adulthood. getting children ready for adulthood. District 88 also does a nice job of videotaping and providing it on their website in English and Spanish, so I really appreciate working with them on those types of things. I also, if you're up for it, I'm doing a Geek Palooza in Villa Park. What is Geek Palooza? Geek Palooza is where you dress up in costumes. You have comic book creators and you just, and comic book stores and gaming and things like that, things that us geeks like. And we're going to have a costume contest. We even created our own statue, our own trophy for the winner of our costume contest, and we think it's going to be a lot of fun. So that's going to be September 7th at Rotary Park in Villa Park. Now, Glendale Heights has some of the most amazing facilities I've ever seen. The Linda Jackson Senior Center is awesome, and if you didn't know it, I go there almost every month doing bingo. So I will be back in September on the 24th doing bingo at the Linda Jackson Senior Center. I love that. And on, by the way, I have eight towns. On October 11th, we are also doing a senior health fair that is going to be at York Center Per District in Opuna Terrace. So these are some of the events we have coming up, and I know it's a lot because I do a lot, but I think that these are important things to offer to the communities. And I will just wrap with this. I also, while I was in Springfield, was able to, I was very blessed to be able to bring $600,000 to Glendale Heights for a sewer project. Again, it's not exciting, you know, it doesn't make for really good pictures, but boy, you need it, right? We need sewers.
We do.
Right? Yeah. So rather than, you know, having to levy additional taxes and things like that, I was very blessed to be able to bring that to Glendale Heights. And my last term, I was able to do something a little more exciting for me was an ADA playground. But this time, we're going to go a little more practical. But I would just like to say thank you. Thank you to the community of Glendale Heights because I really do feel welcome and supported here. And no, I'm here for you. If you need anything, just reach out to my office. I'm easy to find. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative. And thank you for all the work that you've done on behalf of the Village of Glendale Heights and the community. Sorry?
I just want to say thank you for all you do for Glendale Heights because you, without your grants and your money, I tell you, we couldn't do a lot of projects that we did. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, update on intergovernmental agreement with Queen Bee District, Mr. Flint and Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo Representative Blair Sherlock. The grants that come into Glendale Heights from our state representative and our state senator, this year is well past seven figures. Every year, we get close to that amount of money in grants coming into the village. Some of them are pretty, some of them are lining sewers under North Avenue, but $600,000 of lining sewers saves us a million dollars of tearing up North Avenue when a sewer breaks. So it's money well spent, and we appreciate everything that you've done for the village because you are the most active representative we have in the village from all of our elected officials, so thank you. So Public Works does more than pretty much any other outside the police department work in the village, obviously, and most of us don't see what it is because it's all underground or you might see a sidewalk, but mostly it's underground. In March of 2025, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Queen Bee School District 16 to, essentially the agreement says, we get to use our facility whenever we have a need, essentially, and we get to provide them this beautiful sidewalk. Now, why is a sidewalk important, right? They built a beautiful new administration building, and there was really no safe way for our kids to walk down Bloomingdale Road from the subdivisions behind the school and Camera Park to the school without walking, as you can see, directly next to Bloomingdale Road. So part of the project from the village aside was to create a safe walking space for our kids to get to school through the admin building. The Center Island there, I'll let Joe talk about the Center Island there, but this was a project that was all done in-house, and I want to, we don't get to recognize our Public Works guys because you don't get to see most of what they do, right? But in this case, these guys took most of the summer, right? Because it wasn't a two-week project, it was a two-month project, took most of the summer to do this project, along with every other project they got to do. But you can see the space they created and just how much safer Bloomingdale Road is getting to the school for all the kids who use the path to walk. So Mike Meritato is the division manager, Joe Giannelli is the foreman, you guys can sit, but John Cavall, crew leader, come on up here. Phil Williamson, crew leader, come on up here. Pat Kelly, maintenance worker. Jeff Timar, maintenance worker. Logan Moore, maintenance worker. Jaylen Williams, who sees him, I think, right? Joe Grallo, maintenance worker. Dave Burns, maintenance worker. These are gentlemen that put all that together throughout the entire summer, and I just really wanted to recognize them because this IGA on Thursday of Summer Fest came into use. Because on Thursday of Summer Fest, we had to evacuate Summer Fest, and we've always had a great relationship with Joe and the school district, but they don't have to have a great relationship with the village if they don't want to. The IGA has formalized that, and his staff was at Summer Fest just as much as our staff was at Summer Fest, and they allowed us to, this IGA gives us the use of the school during Fest for our evacuations. And we evacuated, I don't know how many kids to the school.
It was all for 100 people.
100 people that were there, and the purpose of evacuation is how many, because we have a lot of kids who come to Summer Fest for the carnival and their parents aren't there. And what do they do in case of evacuation, right? They have no place to go. So it's imperative that we have places for our kids to go to in case of bad weather or other incidents because the use of Queen Bee isn't just for Summer Fest. We've had a lot of storms happen. If we have families displaced from a natural disaster, we have an opportunity to use a large facility to house people if we need to for a short period of time. If we have some other event happen, we have a really cool facility with a brand-new, updated everything that's there for us with this IGA. So I just want to say thank you to every, all of you. The community's safer because of all the stuff that you guys did.
Thanks, Doug.
And we don't get to recognize our, our streets guys or our utility guy or anybody else very often because you don't get to see what they do. But here, you get to see what they do and be proud of all that for the next 20 years that you guys are here. So thank you very much, right? Just wanted to recognize you.
Appreciate it. Really love you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President and trustees of Glendale Heights. Thanks, Doug, for the introduction. I'm Dr. Joe Williams, and I'm the superintendent of Queen Bee. Now, every time I get hauled in here in front of the trustees, I'm like, what's going to happen? Because you remember the first time I got to do this, it was two days after the country shut down, shut down for COVID, and it was Mayor Jackson, and the conversation was, are we going to let them cut the curbs so we can do our parking loop and back? It was about pedestrian safety. So Trustee Light, I think we finally solved the problem that you brought up seven or eight years ago, saying, how are the kids going to walk away from Bloomingdale Road onto your campus? What we did was, the board gave us permission to go negotiate a fair price purchase for that, and so what you're seeing is immediately approaching Mr. Flint and other village officials. I think Keith and I stood out there one day taking a look, saying, if I can get it, do you guys want to partner and get this done? On behalf of Queen Bee 16, our school board, we appreciate the partnership. We're delighted with the professionalism from the trustees and also too from the mayor. Also too, your employees, village workers, we were delighted to have them on campus because they care. A lot of people grow up here, they care about what our facilities look like, they wanted to make it nicer and safer for kids, and here's how we're going to finish it. We've been doing pollinator gardens on all of our campuses as we go. The Center Island will be planted in September, that's probably our best month to do it. We see a lot of bees, which is good, also monarchs and moths and those kinds of things, and we'll have the benches installed right after we get it planted. And if you took it today, the grass is actually growing, the rain has been really good for us. So we are delighted to continue our partnership, including times we've partnership for the COVID vaccine clinics. I mean, Queen Bee is here to support the village because we know we're all on the same team. We care deeply about the children and families at Glendale Heights, so very much appreciated as we go. One last little plug, we are starting a little later this year, as we will be for two more summers. Our remodel is well underway. So we've completed our cafeteria, our gymnasium, that's the big jumbotron that Mr. Flint was talking about. Trustees, please, if you would like to visit, Madam Mayor, I would love to have you come out and visit to see once the kids are in it, because that's when our schools come alive. We open for kids on the 26th, all staff back on the 25th. But all I can say in short is, thank you for your continued partnership and professionalism. Our school board appreciates it, and our community appreciates it even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to say, Joe and Mike, you guys got a great crew, you guys are doing a great job, so thank you. Thank you. There is one other picture that Dr. Williams shared with me that sits in the middle of Queen Bee, right when you walk in, there's a picture there, and this is from a 1979 snowstorm, so kids used to go to school in the snow.
Walk.
And they used to walk. And one of our employees is the short, little skinny kid on the right, and I know he's watching because he watches every board meeting on YouTube. So Vince Casada, this is you in 1979, walking to school in a snowstorm, so everybody can prove you actually went to school, at least in eighth grade. So.
Don't get if I may. Also too, anybody who wants to visit, we've been working to collect the history of Queen Bee, right? Goes back to 1816 Glendale Heights. We worked really hard on this picture. We didn't know that was Vince when we picked it because we have all these images, right? And then Vince is telling me, you got to get a picture of me. I was at Snowstorm, it was a newspaper, I'm like, we have a picture of Vince. Pictures of Glendale Heights over the years. It starts with Abraham Lincoln all the way to, and we've got, we're trying to capture the history of this.
So thank you, I just want to end with a, make fun of Vince's picture. Thank you, guys, appreciate everything.
Thank you. Item six, presentation of life-saving award to Officer Ameron Sumto, Chief Pappas.
Thank you, Village Board, for the opportunity to recognize the exemplary efforts of one of our police officers tonight. On Monday, August 1st, officers and paramedics were dispatched to 300 block of Loveland Drive for a young infant choking. Officer Zaitin arrived on scene and met with the mother and her infant daughter outside the home. The mother told the officer, told Officer Zaitin, the infant was choking and blood was coming from her throat. Officer Zaitin observed the baby to have red and purplish skin. The mother handed the infant to Officer Zaitin, who immediately gave the baby some backslaps. Officer Zaitin gave a series of backslaps until the baby's gurgling sounds turned into cries. The Bloomingdale paramedics arrived on scene, and Officer Zaitin turned over the now alert and responsive infant to the paramedics for further care. The quick and decisive actions by Officer Zaitin helped to preserve the life of one of our residents. Not only did Officer Zaitin remain calm, he showed great compassion for both the mother and her baby daughter during the stressful moments. I would like to recognize Officer Amir Zaitin for his professionalism, dedication, and determination to save the life of another one of our residents. For his action, we will be presenting Officer Zaitin with a life-saving plaque and a life-saving pin, which he can proudly wear upon his uniform. I'm going to ask if Mom and Baby can come forward. We have Mom, Madeline, and Baby, Melina. Melena. Fourth generation, and she's still here with us. That's awesome.
Yes. Thank you, family, for coming. Number of board meetings I have not cried at, zero. Next, public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item You have the consent agenda before you. Item number four, approval of the August 15th, 2025 payroll and accounts payable listing of August 21st, 2025 in the total amount of $2,560,866.50 needs to be amended and therefore removed from the consent agenda to new business. Is there a motion to remove consent agenda number four to new business? Thank you, Trustee Meritato.
Motion to remove item number four for new agenda.
Second. Second. Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to remove consent item number four to new business is approved. Would Village Administrator Doug Flint please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meetings of August 7th, 2025. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of August 7th, 2025. Three, approval of the special board meeting minutes of August 16th, 2025. Four has been removed to new business. Five, ordinance imposing municipal grocery retailers occupation tax and municipal grocery service occupation tax, amending the village code of Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, an ordinance to amend Article A entitled Home Rule Municipal Retailers and Service Occupation Tax of Chapter 2 entitled Village Taxes of Title 3 entitled Finance and Taxation of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. Seven, resolution to accept the 2025 Powering Safe Communities Grant for solar-powered radar science and to authorize the execution of the grant acceptance form. Eight, resolution to approve a final plot of subdivision for the property located at 1655 Schmal Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Nine, resolution rejecting all bids for the Camera Park Basketball Court Improvement Project. Ten, resolution authorizing issuance of a Notice of Award Purchase Order for the purchase of a Ford extender routers and a Cambium Network Bridge for the SCADA system for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eleven, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the Fifth Amendment to the Cloud Dad Storage Services Agreement between Central Square, formerly known as Sungar Public Sector LLC, and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Twelve, resolution appointing police commissioners to the Board of Police Commissioners for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Thirteen, a resolution to authorize the creation of a new village checking account for workers' compensation claims with Bloomingdale Bank and Trust. Fourteen, approval of pay request number two to Utility Service Company for the West Perdett 500,000 gallon elevated petosphere water storage tank annual maintenance in the total amount not to exceed $259,001. annual maintenance in the total amount not to exceed $259,001.00. Fifteen, approval of the pay request number one to TDJK Ventures Incorporated, DPA, Cerro Pro Painters and Elbers for the painting of Public Works Building, total amount not to exceed $14,756.29. Sixteen, approval of pay request number two to TDJK Ventures, DBA, Cerro Pro Painters and Elbers for the painting of Public Works Building, total amount not to exceed $13,662.29. Seventeen is approval of consent.
Thank you, Doug. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Meritato.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, one, a motion to waive first reading on new business items two and three. Is there a motion to waive first reading on business item two and three? Trustee Matrasco.
Motion to waive items two and three.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Beacon. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business items two and three is approved. Item two, an ordinance to waive bid, accept the proposal Ferguson Enterprise LLC doing business as Ferguson Water Works and authorizing the execution of a Notice of Award Purchase Order for the purchase of the Guderman NB-OT Leak Detection System. First reading is waived, this is ordinance 2025-38. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-38? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Trustee Siddiqui. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee, sorry, Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-38 is approved. Item three, an ordinance approving the naming and renaming municipal facilities and roads policy of the Village of Glendale Heights from the August 7th, 2025 Committee of the Whole. First reading is waived, this is ordinance 2025-39. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-39?
Still moved.
Thank you, Trustee Beacon.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Meritato. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-39 is approved. An ordinance to amend Chapter 8 entitled Traffic Schedules of the Title VII entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Parking Restrictions on Lake Ridge Drive, this is first reading. Item five, approval of the August 15th, 2025 payroll and accounts payable listing of August 21st, 2025, in the total amount of $2,568.60. Is there a motion to amend the total amount of the August 15th, 2025 payroll and accounts payable listing of August 21st, 2025, to $2,557,902.70? A decrease of $2,963.81?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Light.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
And Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
The motion to amend the total amount of the August 15th, 2025 payroll and accounts payable listing of August 21st, 2025, to $2,557,902.70 is approved. Is there a motion to approve the August 15th, 2025 payroll and accounts payable listing of August 21st, 2025, in the total amount of $2,557,902.70? Trustee Light.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
I get to say the big number one more time. The motion to approve the August 15th, 2025 payroll and accounts payable listing of August 21st, 2025, in the total amount of $2,557,902.70 is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Executive session, there is none. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Light.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. All in favor?
All in.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Matrasco, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, August 21st, 2025, to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Okay.
You're lucky.
My lucky day. Okay, committee reports. Glendale Heights Golf Club Committee.
Okay, I'm going to probably repeat just about what Keith said at the beginning. The Glendale Heights Golf Club Committee meeting took place on August 12th. A lot of items were discussed, including the 2025 Charity Golf Classic that is taking place next Wednesday, August 27th. As of today, we have 96 golfers registered and still hoping to pass last year's number of 103. If you would like to golf, join us for dinner, or sign up to be a volunteer, give Jennifer a call at Glendale Heights, and she'll get you set up. In addition, the Charity Classic, there was a discussion about some bunker work being done on the golf course. An update on the high school teams that are using. Glendale Heights has a home course and a number of other items. The one really great thing that we brought up was the increase in gross revenue between 2024 and 2025, a little less than $100,000 in just three months. Which is super. The golf course has been busy this summer, and the staff is doing a great job moving people around the golf course, because they're moving around the golf course that means getting more people playing and just keeping them moving on the course. That's it for me for the golf course.
Okay. Historical Committee?
Of course I do. All right, I just want to remind everybody, August 30th, at 10:00 AM noon will be our open house. The library is co-hosting with us. I believe it is an ice cream social this time, correct, Keith?
You are correct.
It's going to be exciting.
So, which kind of ice cream you guys are?
No, for you, that's all. No ice cream for you. After that, we've had more donations given to the historic house. We just picked up a beautiful display case by one of our seniors at the senior center. She had it and wanted us to properly display our items that we have. I do have questions for people. If you've got anything related to Glendale Heights sports, whether it be baseball, football, something of the past, we're putting some stuff together. I have some 1979 pamphlets and brochures. So, I'm looking to put more sports memorabilia together for Glendale Heights. I saw Joe Williams skipped out of here pretty quick. I'll have to be talking with him, because I would like to work with him with their historical under their work and get more pictures of Vince Casada. So, that is about all I have. Thank you.
Okay, ordinance committee? Nothing? Okay, Parks and Rocks Committee?
Okay, I have no report. Working on some new things, maybe coming soon, but no report.
Property Enhancement Committee?
No report.
Okay, Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
We have no report, but we had a hot dog day last Thursday. Seniors like it, there probably was about maybe 55 seniors. Some trustees were there. I do all the cooking. Everybody's still alive, so, that's a good thing. But yeah, they play banks, they had a putting contest. Everybody enjoys themselves. This is the second one this year we had there, so...
You must be doing something right.
It was a great day for it, too.
Yeah, it was a great day, good day. And by the way, I did everything else Keith said at the beginning. So, just so, just so everybody knows.
Okay, public comment of committee recommendations and discussions regarding only? Anybody in the public? No? Okay. Oh, wait, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on a committee recommendation or discussion regarding items only?
Appears there's nobody.
No? Okay. Committee recommendations. Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation. A recommendation to approve an application to rezone the property located at 401 East North Avenue.
409.
409.
Oh, 409, sorry. Yes, it has a nine, I saw, that was my bad. 409 East North Avenue, Glendale Heights, Illinois, from C2 Community Commercial District to C3 General Commercial District.
What piece of property is that?
It's the piece of property the village owns in North and Western.
Next to the dealership, I thought.
Right across from the dealership?
Right across, right next to the dealership.
Yeah.
On the south, the south side.
Southwest, southwest corner.
And what's the change in zone?
Everything around it, Zone C3.
Okay.
That's the only property that's Zone C2. So, we're looking to bring that in line with all the other properties around it to make it more marketable to other things and take it out of the C2 district and put it in the C3. All the properties that had a joint in are C3.
Okay. Any other questions? Good. Is there a motion to move this to the Board with a recommendation to concur? Pat? Sorry.
Motion to move it to the Board for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, vote?
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay. The motion to move this recommendation to the Board is approved. Okay. Discussions regarding proposed village ordinance pertaining to low-speed electric bicycles, low-speed gas bicycles, and personal mobility devices and low-speed electric scooters. Chief, I don't know if you have anything more you want to add for this?
I gave you guys the agenda summaries. I don't know if you guys were able to look those over. There's one correction on there on the bottom where it said the age of 16. The 18, the number should be 16. It should be 16, it's a scribbler's error on that part of it. That's the parental responsibility. That's because you're able to ride the bicycle at 16. It's driver's license, kind of same.
George, if we could, if it's okay with the Board, just for the public can actually hear and people have the opportunity to hear what's in this ordinance, if we could maybe just go to the podium, George, and just kind of read through the concepts of what this ordinance is. I want the public just to be fully informed so they can...
Yeah, agree.
I think the definitions are important. Yes. What's covered.
Some of this is going to be boring, but I'm going to go through the whole thing. Not the whole thing, I'll go through parts of it. So, this falls under the bicycle ordinance as well, so we have to put definitions in there. So, the definition of a low-speed electric bicycle is a bicycle equipped with operable pedals and electric motors less than 750 watts. What that means is that this bicycle can reach a maximum speed of 20 miles an hour. So, that's what we're looking at for electric bicycles. Low-speed gas is the same thing. It goes by 15 cubic centimeter displacement, and it's the same thing. It needs to be under 20 miles per hour. So, those are the two things that we're looking at for the bicycle ordinance in regards to the bicycle itself, the electric or the gas bikes. Every traffic law that's out there through the Illinois Vehicle Code stays as it is. This ordinance incorporates those into what we're doing here. So, being that said, in order to drive a car on the road, you have to be 16, right? So, this goes coincides with that. So, you have to be 16 or older to ride an electric bicycle or a gas-powered bicycle upon the roadway, which can only go to a maximum of 20 miles an hour again. That's only for the roadway. It cannot be allowed on sidewalks, just the roadway. So, again, you have to follow the rules of the road as in traffic laws. When we talk about parental responsibilities later on, parental responsibilities usually covers when you're 18 and younger. But since you can ride the bicycle at 16, as long as your bicycle is equipped properly, you're fine. Now, when the 18 comes into effect, say like this. One of the rules that we have in this ordinance, or a part of the ordinance, is that you cannot have two people on a bicycle. So, if you're 17 years old and you're on this electric bicycle on the road and you have somebody else on the bicycle, that's a violation of the ordinance. That's when the parental responsibility kicks in. So, that's the catch that we have. It looks confusing because it says 16 and 18, but that's what it is. Think of the 18 as for violations of the rules of the road, kind of things.
Chief, does that mean that two 18-year-olds could sit on the bike together?
No, no. That's just for parental responsibility.
Oh, got it.
So, rules are for everybody, right? But if you're 16 to 18 and you're violating those rules, it's up to the parent to say, "Hey, you shouldn't be doing that to your child."
Got it.
That's, it's confusing. When we look at the scooter one, it's straight 18 all the way through. That's the only difference, because like I said, we're following the driver's license rule. You can drive a car on the road, you can ride a bike on the road as well.
So, Chief, are we writing a ticket to the parents? Like, or we are writing a warning ticket? And my other question is, let's say I'm a 16-year-old. I don't have ID, and I'm not going to give you any ID of mine. I'm a stubborn kid. I don't know who my parents are. What's your...
It's the same rule as a driver's license. So, if you don't have a driver's license, you have to give the license to the officer. If there's an infraction, then you have to present it. You have to present identification.
But I don't have any ID. I'm just a young kid. You're going to spend a little bit of time in our police department. They'll come get you.
Yes, that's what it does. So, we just wait around for the parent.
So, but that does bring up a valid, because they'll have permits. Some of them can actually have permits. Do those still apply, too?
Those still, because you remember, when you have a permit, everything goes to Secretary of State. So, everything will register when the officer runs them. So, you don't have to have the physical ID on you. If somebody gives their name, it's going to come up through this.
They'll find it.
Right. And remember, this question came up at one of our executive meetings. We have three SROs, the School Resource Officers. They have information they can gather as well, too.
Yeah.
Okay?
Remember, permit, you still have to have somebody in the car with you. If you're on a bike, you can only have one person on a bike. So, if you have a permit, you don't have a license, right? And this prohibits anybody under the age of 16, period, of being on an e-bike.
Yeah, but you could be 16 with a permit. That's what I'm saying.
But your permit's not your license. And you must be a licensed driver to be on the road on an e-bike.
Essentially, a 10-year-old should not be.
10-year-old, yes. The whole idea is to make it so we don't, these things are way too powerful. This is part of our safety road campaign, that you go way too fast on these. And I gave the example, you know, two weeks ago, I was talking to Trustee Siddiqui and on Bloomingdale Road, I'm coming up to Glen Point, and somebody's going on a scooter about 45 miles an hour passing cars on Bloomingdale Road. Crazy, crazy, it should not happen. Now, that same scooter can be owned by a little kid, too. So, there's something that we have to make sure that we take care of.
Yeah, 100%.
And that's part of the bicycle ordinance. So, you also have to make sure that you have proper brakes on the bicycle and everything else. So, equipment goes on there, plus the rules of the road for driving, too.
Plus, Chief, they have to be registered. So, if they didn't want to give us their ID, but they have the bicycle that's properly registered or e-bike, you can track down where...
Yeah.
Yeah, so it registers through the police department. Yeah, so it registers through the police department, we do that with bicycles, too. So it's the same thing with e-bikes.
But the gist of it is, if you have a 10-year-old, right in your example, and they're on an e-bike, and they, they honestly might not know anything, right, because you're 10, right? Mom and dad are gonna come and retrieve that, or we'll bring the kid home, one way or the other. But if, if it's a recurring issue, I don't manage to write parents' tickets on the first time, but it's a recurring issue under parental responsibility, the parent is responsible for allowing that child to ride an e-bike against our code. So as we do in other cases throughout the village under parental responsibility, the parent would receive citations on behalf of their under 16-year-old child. They would be responsible for the violations. That's right.
Correct. And you gotta remember, when we enact ordinance, there's also the period before the, when you guys voted it, before we actually start enforcing it, too. We have a big educational portion of that, so we can let the community know through our social media, through David, through our signs, through our schools, talking to, because I know the schools are in the same position that we are. So it's all about education.
And chief, I don't know if you mentioned the empowerment, we have the right to empower.
That's the other thing. So if the parental responsibility, back to trustee Siddiqui's question, yes, for, if the vehicle or the bicycle is a parental violation, we can bring the bike back with us and wait for the parent to come pick it up. Yep. Any questions?
Chief, I have a question. Sorry, go ahead, Pat.
George, we're not doing anything that any other village is not doing. I mean, they're all, basically, you got the same ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting, we share the radio with Bloomingdale PD and they don't have a chief, they have a director of public service and I don't know, I hear him on the radio probably 25 times a day calling out e-bikes violations. So yes, the communities all around us are doing the same thing.
We're actually behind the eight ball in this, honestly.
Yep.
Many communities, especially the downtown communities, are prohibited in their downtown areas a long time ago.
Quick question. I know this has been a problem for quite some time.
Yes.
I found out recently that this ordinance was actually crafted almost a year ago and just updated with the parental part. How come this hasn't come to us before?
We've been going back and forth, there's different reasons for that, so just communication. We have to make sure that we had it, we should have pushed this thing forward before, but it was just communication.
Because I think they mirrored, most municipalities mirrored our ordinance already, far from us.
Some towns did look at what we wrote, too. We share information and even with like, um... He's gonna share it with Camden Health, too.
Yeah. I know it's really important to get this done because it is, it is a problem. I mean, for not only just the kids on their e-bikes, but the drivers of the cars. So, no, I thank you for getting this, this far, thank you.
Thanks.
Chief, I had a question. Chief, you said that the electric bikes were 20 miles per hour?
Yep.
And they could be on the street?
Yes.
What streets do we have that you can only ride 20 miles per hour? Like, are you talking through the neighborhood?
Remember, a bicycle, it's the same thing, adults are not supposed to ride their bicycles on the sidewalk.
Right.
They're supposed to ride on the street. Regular bicycles don't all go 20 miles an hour, too.
Okay.
So that's just it. The maximum threshold that these can go to are 20, that's what it is.
Okay.
They don't have to go 20 miles, and that's just the maximum.
And they're just gonna ride on the side of the, side of the road, not on the sidewalk?
That's correct.
Yep.
There's regulations where they can ride on the... But there is no minimum speed limit on our side streets.
Aren't they 25?
They're 20, that's the maximum.
That's the max.
That's the max.
There's no minimum.
Yes, yes.
So one other question?
Yes.
The gas ones, they go a lot faster, 45. And I'll see them in the street and I'm seeing them acting like they're a car. It's, they're not on the side, they're right in the center. Do they actually, from the state, do we, do they have to have a plate and insurance? I'm just curious. It's not something we would do, but I'm just curious, are they actually...
They're not supposed to be on the road. They're not registered as plates. And that's gonna get into the next one, which is more of the mini-bike thing under the low speed, scooters and such, that's what that is. So a lot, it just boomed. For some reason, the scooters, the electric bikes, the motorized bikes, they all boomed and everybody thinks, hey, I can do it now. But that's not the truth.
They became cheaper, that's why.
Yeah. There was a time when, I don't know if you guys remember, everybody had those electric lights that were underneath their cars, lit up the ground, so those were illegal, too, but everybody had them.
Yep.
It's just that people decided, hey, I see it, think it's cool, and I go and buy them. That's the problem.
I'll turn mine off, I'm sorry.
Would this apply to four-wheel, like, go-kart type of things, too?
That's gonna get into our, the next phase of it. So the second ordinance that we're gonna talk about, should I jump into that one or should I finish this?
I didn't have a question.
And one other question. Is there any extension that this could be applied to a senior citizens little rascal-type scooter?
They're exempt.
Yes. That's exempt, and that goes in the next one.
Our disabilities, those are exempt.
The little rascal.
Yes.
Chief, can I ask you a question? You know, Illinois has state laws regarding the bikes, and they go up to Class 3, which are 28 mile an hour. What if somebody has a Class 3 bike?
What we did with our ordinance is we restricted it, so that's, we did the max, that's the max that you can go.
They have the bike day after.
It has to be under that 20 miles an hour.
But I ride regular bikes, like a recumbent, I could, I could hit over 30 miles an hour.
And he's, he's right, he's right. I have a road bike that I used to ride up and down Fullerton. If you take Fullerton at the library and you go to the police department, I've reached 35 miles an hour plus. Yes, you can actually do it. So regular bicycles, Kim, to your question, can go that fast as well. Right? Depends on, how do you wanna power?
So my question here, Chief, how about just the regular bicycles? I know that, I see some kids who go to school on a bicycle, and I'm not talking about like, you know, 18-year-olds, these are like maybe 10, 12-year-olds, 13-year-olds, you know, and it's just a pedal bike. And sometimes they even go to, you know, Camera Park for our, you know, our skate park, bicycle park, right? That applies to them as well?
No, it's a whole different thing. But this is like for motorized bicycles.
Motorized, okay.
That's what this is for.
So regular bicycles, okay?
Right, yes, and that's why we have that, it's 16-year-old, we want kids to be able, we implore kids to ride the bicycles to school, right?
Chief, if I can, this is a matter of clarification, so maybe, I think we're talking the same thing. If they're over 20 miles an hour, if they can, they're not allowed.
They're not allowed, correct.
They're illegal.
They're not allowed.
But they do go over 20, correct? So it's the person that's on, has to make sure they're not going over 20? Do they actually have a speedometer on it so they know?
I think it's the capability.
They do.
It's the capability.
Okay. I don't have one, so I was...
If they're capable going over 20, they're not allowed.
Okay, so if they can...
On the street or on the sidewalk, anyway.
So we went watts and CCs, so the electric vehicles are the amount of watts that you can put onto them. And it's usually, now, they're gonna be lighter, heavier, so that's gonna be the difference in the speed as well, but it goes back to the watts where it was 750 and the 15 cubic centimeters for the gas ones. Any more questions?
Can radar pick up a bicycle?
Definitely, yep. So actually, laser radars go on the license plate itself, so that's the spot for it. So bicycle is a lot bigger than a license plate, so it will work. We good?
Can we just clarify next steps for this particular, just for the community to understand where we are with, you know, today we're in discussion, right? In, in the committee of the whole, what, what does the lifeline of this?
Well, brings back to the board, next meeting?
With the one amendment.
With the one amendment of...
The 18. Being 16.
Subsection A of, under parental responsibility, is 16, not 18.
Yeah.
We'll bring it forward, that correction, and then we'll bring it forward so that there's more opportunity for discussion from the public at new business, next board meeting. Well, we'll bring it back for first reading and then we'll get a discussion next board meeting after that, I guess. But we'll, we'll bring it back to the board, as long as we get a recommendation to move it to the board, we'll bring it back to the board next board meeting.
Thank you.
Chief, if the vehicle is intelligent, do the people who own the vehicle have to pay a fee, like if you occur to recover?
No, it's different. The empowerment is for the parental responsibility one, so the, that is, so we'll hold on to it until the parent comes in. It goes back to trustee Siddiqui's question, so, yeah. Now, we do have that electric bicycle, if, if an adult is intoxicated riding that bicycle, then that's one of the ordinance violations as well.
Chief, tandem bikes, you know, that's two separate people, is that, are we gonna put something with regards to that, like that's motorized? And also tricycles, you were talking about four-wheels, is there gonna be something regarding tricycles with the motor?
There's definitions of the tricycle bike in here as well, so that's included on here. And the tandem bikes, we haven't seen those yet, but I will look and see if we have those out there. I have not seen them.
You can't sit, you can only sit as many people as there are seats.
Seats, yes.
So if there's two seats, you're allowed to sit two people in the bike.
Correct. Do you want me to stick up there for the second one, too?
I don't need to.
Board, do you want to hear further discussion?
For the second one, you're good?
I'm good.
Are we good?
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Okay.
Thanks. Sorry, I had to bring out the kidney. Okay, is there a motion to move this to the board with recommendation to concur?
Still move.
First, second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And discussion? Prove the motion, I'm sorry. Trustee Beacon and then trustee Light.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, apologies, I didn't see that, you didn't see that. And as when you're done, roll call, vote.
Roll call, vote. Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
And trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to move this recommendation to the board is approved. Did...
Madam Giannelli?
Yes. Oh. But there was one more question, Ken, the question was...
Chief, you said that we were gonna put something out for public knowledge to the, teach the public about this? How long is that process? It was, I was just interested in that.
I believe the publishing a law, I believe it's 30 days.
Okay.
Correct on that, Peter?
Are you saying so for the effectiveness of it?
Yes.
We probably wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't be effective for 30 days, but I think she's asking more of a public education.
Right.
That's it, so...
Are you guys gonna put out press or...
Yes, we'll do a lot, so we, the police department always works with David. So David's excellent, pushing us up on our social media, on our marquees and everything else that we have throughout town. And like I said, so we'll give literature to the schools as well.
Oh, excellent, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, the motion to move this recommendation to the board is approved now. Okay, other public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? No? Okay.
Adjourned.
Is this, okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.